Hi, everyone. Welcome to Dean's Chat where we discuss all things podiatric medicine. As you know, I'm Dr. Jeffrey Jensen. I'm the dean at the Arizona College of Podiatric Medicine, and I'm also the host for the podcast. We have a wonderful show for you today, and we're joined by my co-host, Dr. Joe Ritchie, who joined us recently at the Arizona College of Podiatric Medicine. And Joe and I have been working with the podcast and interviewing different leaders in the profession. So, Joe, thanks so much for joining me again today.
Thanks so much for having me.
You're welcome. So, we are going to be interviewing two members of the American Podiatric Medical Association Board of Trustees, Dr. Scott Hughes and Dr. Brooke Bisbee. Dr. Hughes graduated from the Ohio College of Podiatric Medicine and completed his residency with the New Haven Surgical Program. Dr. Brooke Bisbee graduated from the Scholl College of Podiatric Medicine and completed her residency training at the Southern Arizona Veterans Administration Healthcare System. Welcome to Dean's Chat, Dr. Hughes and Dr. Bisbee.
Hello.
Thank you.
It's so great to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, nice to be here.
And Joe, thanks for jumping on.
Thank you again. It's always fun to be here.
Oh, it is for sure. So, on Dean's Chat, we kind of have an informal environment, so I think it's best if we go with first names, if that's okay. Brooke, Scott, Joe, Jeff, is that all right?
Sounds good.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. So, what I wanted to do is just go right to the top, right? Let's talk about your contributions to our profession and the path that led each of you to become a Board of Trustee member with the leading organization in our profession, the American Podiatric Medical Association. And I know it's a long climb to be a Board of Trustee, so I was hoping we'd kind of paint a picture for our students. Dr. Ritchie, Joe, and I are oftentimes talking to our students, and we're leading different clubs, and they're always asking us about the path to leadership positions within the profession. So, I just thought this would be a great opportunity to talk about that. So, Brooke, what did your path look like? How did you get involved with leadership and the APMA?
All right. Well, you know, I think leadership, or a little bit of leading at least, is in my blood. My father was involved in politics while I was growing up, and so I kind of always gravitated towards leadership positions through high school and things like that. And at Scholl, I was part of the student body leadership. So, when I finished residency and came back to my home state, I naturally got involved in the state association. Back then, you know, you just, everybody joined the state association because that was the thing to do. And in Arkansas, where I'm at, we have a very, very small association. We have very few podiatrists in the state. So, our association is only about 45 to 50 members total. And so, getting involved is a little bit easier in some respects when you're in a smaller state like that. Basically, if you want to do something, they'll find something for you to do, because, you know, after a while, some of the guys that had been in practice 30, 40 years, they were ready to not be so involved. So, I just simply stepped up and said, hey, I want to do stuff. And I was very quickly given some committee assignments within the state. And within a couple of years, I ran for our state board. We only have three positions on our state board, so I just worked my way through those. And one of the years, we did not have a delegate to the House of Delegates. Typically, Bunny Brown, Dr. Bunny Brown from Little Rock, that you are probably personally familiar with, he was unable to go one year. And so, I mentioned that I would like to go, and I really enjoyed it. I had no clue what I was doing my first time there. I was totally lost. You know, some of the big states have 12 and 13 people, and they can teach their younger folks. And that was not the case. So, luckily, some of the other delegates there, you know, they were all very, very friendly and kind of took me under their wing and showed me the ropes. And after that, I just really wanted to get involved on the national level more. So, I was a delegate for, I think, 10 or 11 years. And each year, I just kept tugging at me to, you know, you need to do something more, do something more. And Dr. Lloyd Smith from Massachusetts, he and I talked quite a bit. We were in the AC-DC Caucus together, and we often would find ourselves sitting next to each other, discussing issues and things. And he really encouraged me. He was a past APMA president. And so, he really encouraged me to run for a leadership position within the AC-DC Caucus, which is the caucus of the smaller states. And so, I was the vice president of AC-DC for a couple of years. And then, he further encouraged me to run for the board. And so, that is how that all came to be. So, in March of 2014 is when I was elected to my first term on the board.
That's fantastic. So, we'll talk about each of your board experience in a little bit. But Scott, I was hoping you would share with us your path to getting your foot in the door at the APMA, because I know you were very active in Michigan also.
Yeah. I was not very interested in leadership, actually, but got asked to be on some committees, and I did. And then, became the chairman of the Government Affairs Committee in Michigan for like 18 years or something like that. And I found that I enjoyed the politics. Lansing is the state capital of Michigan. I liked going there and talking to the legislators and being involved that way. And I was on the insurance committee too, and working with Blue Cross and that sort of thing, trying to make sure that we get reimbursed equitably. And then, I was interested in being on the House of Delegate. Well, I got asked to be the president and did that and enjoyed that very much. And the highlight of my presidency was that the Michigan Podiatric Medical Association was 100 years old. So, we had a grand party at the Henry Ford Museum, which was really something. But I went to, actually, in Michigan and in many states, it's hard to get on the House of Delegates. And it's something that we've been working on with the board to try to make sure that we get young people involved. But I really respected all the people that were delegates from Michigan, did not want to run against them. And so, basically, the way that I got to go to be a delegate for the House is because Irv Canitt passed away, and that created the opening. And so, then, and I had people, first Randy Kaplan, Matt Garofalas, people were saying, you know, you should run for the board. And I was like, you know, I'm no Irv Canitt. I'm not going to do that. And then, and then, my experience at the House was not a very good one, actually, the first time. There was, there was a Board of Inquiry that year, and there was, I felt like it was a dog and pony show. And I was like, this is a waste of my time. And it was actually Dan Davis then came to Michigan, and I was, you know, basically sharing my feelings with him. And he said, well, I'm going to tell you something that my mother used to tell me. If you're not going to get involved, don't complain. And I was like, okay, well, that kind of hit home. And, you know, Irv Canitt's thing was always make a difference. That's like, that was his big, big thing, make a difference. And at that point, and it's hard to believe, you know, I guess, I'm not sure how many years it's been, because if we look at our politics and what's going on in the world now, it's really gone from bad to worse. But at that point, I was very disillusioned with what was happening in our country and et cetera, and felt kind of powerless about the whole zeitgeist of what was going on. And I thought, well, you know, I can't do anything about that, but podiatry is something I care about, and maybe I can make a difference, you know, to Irv's catchphrase. And so, and so, I ran for the board. And I have to say, it's one of the, one of the best things that I've ever done. The people that I've worked with at APMA, especially Brooke, are some of the best people that I have ever worked with in my life. And, and it does give me, I guess, gratification. It's how I got to meet you, Jeff, you know. And, and so, I'm very, I feel blessed and grateful to be able to serve in the capacity as a trustee.
So, you joined the board in 2017, correct?
Uh, yeah, that sounds right.
You know, it just warms my heart to have an Irv Canitt reference, because Irv was my residency director.
Oh, I forgot.
Wow.
Yeah. Oh, I love Irv. In fact, a year before he passed away, he came down to Miami and did the commencement speech, and I got to spend some extra time with him, which was wonderful. But you, I got another good quote for you here, Scott, and this is one Joe and I are using in Arizona. If you can't say something nice, at least be specific. That sounds like some Irv.
I like that.
That's a little snarky. I didn't realize you guys were snarky down there.
Well, you know where we got that from, is we implemented Epic, the electronic medical records into our university, and all the doctors were disillusioned, and they were just struggling getting on Epic. And the leader of Epic, who is kind of designated to our campus and for our project, that was a quote from her, and, and we've used it. I think it makes sense. If you can't say something nice, at least be specific. That's good.
Yeah. It's actually kind of helpful, because you need specifics to be able to rectify whatever the issue is. So.
There you go. I kind of like it. Joe, your thoughts, Joe, as a younger practitioner, and any questions you have?
Yeah. So, you know, as I've kind of, I've been in practice now for over 10, less than 13, let's see, 12 years or 11 and a half years. I guess some of my curiosities, especially for our audience, as I have educated myself on kind of the role of the APMA, where do you see, I loved what you said about, everyone has an opportunity to make a difference, right? There's a JFK quote, everyone can make a difference, and everyone should try. And I think it's, it's nice for students and residents and, you know, attending faculty to find ways that they can be involved and they can participate. So, what do you think are like the highlights for the APMA? If somebody wanted to get involved, what are the things that you would say are key points of interest for the organization?
Well, first of all, I'm sorry, Brooke.
Go ahead.
You know, what you learn when you get on the Board of Trustees is that the APMA is responsible for everything, and we don't do anything. And so, I might have to use your be specific quote. But I would say that, I mean, there's myriad opportunities, and whatever you're interested in, you know, you can find something to volunteer with. But the, probably the biggest thing on the grassroots level is politically, because that is, you know, Randy Kaplan, who's Chair of the PAC, who's a great friend of mine from Michigan, and he likes a quote, and some ancient Romans said it, I think it might have been Seneca, but I'm guessing about that. But they said, you know, something like, you know, you cannot take, what is it? Something about, I'm sorry, I brought it up, and now I don't remember. But it's basically like, you cannot take an interest in politics, but politics is going to take an interest in you. It's like that thing, like, if, if you're not at the dinner, you're on the menu, kind of thing. And so, we, we do need people to be active in that way at the grassroots level, and then I'll let Brooke take the rest of that.
Yeah, there's, you know, not everybody is cut out for or has the time to, you know, work their way up to the highest level and be on the board. And I totally understand that. I didn't, can't say that I ever thought I was going to do that, you know, when I first started podiatry school. But yeah, there's plenty of opportunities at your local level, your state level, lots of different committees. Certainly, politics is definitely important. Some people are terrified of politics, or they just, they just don't want to get into that part. So, another really, really good part that's very helpful for your practice is trying to do something in the area of health policy or coding. But most states have committees that tackle those issues as far as dealing with insurance companies or coding issues. And then, certainly, APMA has both committees. They have a health policy committee and a coding committee. And getting involved on a committee level like that is so, so important. You know, the board doesn't do all of the work. We really, really rely on our everyday committee member to do a lot of the stuff, and then they, you know, report to us, and we make decisions about some things. But our general APMA members that are committee members are so valuable to us. And you don't, you don't have to be in practice, you know, 20 or 30 years to be on those committees. You don't have to be a delegate to the House of Delegates to be on those committees. You apply. Usually, the call for committee members is put out in the spring, right after the House of Delegates. And then, those come to the new president-elect, which will be myself next year. And usually, that's due by like September 1st, and then, committee assignments then get made and start the next, the following March for a year. And you can serve up to five years on any given committee. But, and we, APMA has made a huge push to have young members, young physicians on the commit, on every committee has at least one young physician minimum on it. So, please, I don't want anybody to feel like that they haven't been around long enough to serve on a committee, because they absolutely can. We really value their input.
That's great. You know, I've gotten to know Randy Kaplan, of course, and then Ben Walner has just done some phenomenal work with advocacy. And I think it's interesting, because legislative issues, coding and billing issues are things that touch all podiatrists. And one of the neat things about the advocacy efforts is they help podiatrists at all levels of their career, whether you're, you're older and established in practice, or you're a young practitioner, or even if you're a resident, talking about bills to assist with decreasing interest rates on loans and things. So, my hat's off to APMA. Their advocacy efforts are outstanding.
Thank you.
I would tell you one real home run that the APMA hit. And so, several years ago, we were celebrating the fact that we got the VA bill passed, you know, for the Veterans Administration. And at that meeting, when we were celebrating that, Medicare, excuse me, came out with a proposed rule that was going to, when we went to the medical decision making for E&amp;M's rather than the, you know, the other criteria, that they were going to have a separate G code for podiatrist that paid you 40% less. And so, you know, of course, we didn't, it's funny, because we're like celebrating and went into panic mode in a matter of like five-minute transition. And, but, you know, marshaled all the resources and relationships that we had. And, and of course, that did not stand. And we were, and Brooke could talk more about this because of her relationships with RUC and the other professional associations. But they were probably instrumental in their help to get Medicare to say, no, this isn't fair. This isn't right. And Dr. Christina, our executive director, made a great point and said, just because we, and the reason why they did that is because we were coding loader, lower. But because of our limited scope of license, we were not able to bill those higher four and five visits, even though we were doing the work for those, say, with these infected diabetic ulcers, et cetera, these people that are very sick. When he pointed out that we could easily be doing fours and fives if we had this criteria. And I will just use myself as an example. I went back and looked at what I had billed for E&amp;M visits prior to the medical decision-making criteria change for E&amp;M's, and then looked at it afterwards. And I was reimbursed more than $100,000 more the subsequent year. It was not because I did more work. Nothing changed. The only thing was is that I was able to build those fours and rare, rare fives because of that. And if it wasn't for APMA, nobody would be able to do that. And so, you know, one of the things that we struggle with, obviously, is we're a membership organization, and people say, well, why should I pay dues to APMA? But if APMA wasn't there when this happened, you know, what kind of a hit would the profession have taken financially? And who knows where, once you start getting segregated out like that, where that path ends up. And like you pointed out, how it benefits all podiatrists. It didn't just help the APMA member podiatrist. It's every single DPM that's billing an E&amp;M in the United States has APMA to thank for that.
Well said. You know, that has a ripple effect all the way down to the schools, because I remember when that was coming down. I had to do a town hall and invite all the students to explain what was going on and explain what the profession was doing to move forward. And yeah, without that aspect, advocacy efforts of APMA, we would be challenging, much more challenging than it is.
Right.
So, I wanted to talk specifically about the board and the roles on the board. Because, Scott, you and I have worked together since 2017. You're, I don't know if you call it APMA liaison to AACPM, but you and I have the benefit of working together on lots of different areas. Are you on multiple committees like that, or how does that work?
Yes. Well, I've been the liaison to the AA and also to CPME. And then, I've been the chairman of the parity committee since I've been on the board. And then, there's other committees that we rotate through, like health policy, diversity, equity, inclusion, coding. I'm forgetting a bunch of them.
Membership, communications.
Yes, thank you.
Public, public health, CPAG, which is Clinical Practice Advisory Group Legislative. We just got our, I had the list in front of me. Yeah, we, there's seven committees that you have to be on before your president. So, Ms. Stephanie Simmons keeps a, makes sure that that happens so that nobody misses one. And the rest of them, we get assigned to not really in a set order, but they do want to make sure that we serve pretty much on everything before your president, the seven of them for sure. I, my biggest assignment is like Scott has CPME and AA. My biggest contribution has been in the coding and health policy arena with, through the AMA RUC. I'm one of the three advisors to the RUC. And I actually was on that a year before I was elected to the board. So, that's been a long haul, about 12 years now. But because of that work, every year, I'm automatically on health policy and coding. And then, I work my other committees into that communication membership development, different, all the different committees of the board.
So, here, Joe and I are, I'm sorry, Scott, it's Joe and I are thinking, we're on all kinds of committees, not only within the Arizona College of Podiatric Medicine, but within Midwestern University. That kind of appeals to compare to what you've been working on in committees and in the leadership role with APMA. I'm sorry, Scott, I interrupted you.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, Brooke, why don't you say a little bit about what RUC is? Because there's probably like.
Yeah, a lot of people probably have no clue. So, in a nutshell, and if anybody really wants to know all about RUC, there's actually a recorded webinar on the APMA website for members that I did about a year ago. So, AMA has the CPT Committee and the Relative Value Update Committee for RVUs. And so, like, let's say, we're going to create a new code. Well, that goes to CPT first. They create it, and they give it the definition and all that. Then, it comes to the RUC, the Relative Value Update Committee. And we have to come up with a work RVU value for every single CPT code. And not to get too much into the weeds, but every work RVU has three parts. It has practice expense, like how many gauze do you use? How much, how many inches of tape do you use? Milliliters of injectables, everything. So, it has the practice expense, the malpractice part, which is a formula that CMS just comes up with, and the clinical staff time. And we have to send out surveys to members. We get the surveys back. We have lots of spreadsheets we go through to analyze those surveys. And then, we come up with recommendations. We go before this huge RUC panel to defend our recommendations and the RUC votes. Now, that doesn't automatically set the RVU. Those are recommendations that then get forwarded to CMS, and CMS will either accept them, or I would say raise them, but they never raise them. So, they either accept them or they lower them. And then, when the proposed physician rule comes out every summer, that's when we find out if they accepted them, or if we need to go back and fight again to get them back to where what they're recommended. And, you know, the general public, when I'm explaining this to like family members, they'll say, well, of course, you're just going to put it as high as you can. And that's not really true. Every medical specialty in the country, from the nutritionist to the brain surgeons, has representation there. And they really hold each other accountable and, you know, fight for every tenth of a point. And it's, it's a process. APMA has been part of this for years, and we work very, very closely with our orthopedic colleagues, our vascular colleagues, the general surgeons, dermatology, radiology. Those are probably the five that we work with the most on presenting these, these codes. And I'm actually attending my last RUC meeting, at least for a while after my presidency. Maybe I'll go back. I don't know. But it's been 12 years. But it's, it's a detailed process, very much so. But if anybody likes details and really wants to learn about coding, then that's certainly something to think about, maybe trying to get involved with someday.
So, Brooke, it is a 12-year process to become president. What year are you into it now, 10 or 11?
Yeah, I'm about 10 and a half right now.
10 and a half. So, here's a loaded question. What's your favorite committee to work on?
That is a loaded question. You know, the coding and in health policy part just kind of comes naturally because of the RUC stuff. But I've really enjoyed membership. It's so frustrating at the same time, because it is something that we're struggling with, not just APMA, but all, all professional associations are struggling with people being members. And it's, I really, I really want to solve that problem. Like, every night, I'm talking to my husband, what can we do? What can we do? And so, I've really enjoyed working with Ms. Kildell and Ms. Tresky and their team trying to solve this. And we do have some things in the works that are, that we're going to speak about at the House of Delegates this year that's coming down the pipe. So, hopefully, we're going to get the membership issue turned around a little bit in the next few years. It's a slow-moving train. I think Scott has some saying about turning the Titanic around or something. But it's hard to do. But I have enjoyed membership, because I like taking on a challenge that seems impossible.
Maybe doing shows like this will increase membership. I mean.
I hope so.
Because, you know, I think there's a, you know, I remember when I was in practice before I got into academics, and you both know what this is like. You're busy from 7:00 AM till 6:00 PM. Then, you're going off to do cases in the evening, cases at lunch. You have a family. You've got all these things. I think very few practicing podiatrists fully appreciate what APMA brings to the table. I think that's just an observation I've made over the years.
Yeah, and I would agree. And that's actually one of the things Jeff and I were kind of talking about when, when we were kind of planning for this interview is, you know, one nice thing about having something like a podcast is just awareness. When the last one we did, we were talking about perspective, and, you know, there, there's so much value out there, and people just don't know. And it's not necessarily that people don't want to be involved, but when we have only so much time, energy, and attention, knowing where to channel that and focus that. And that's why I think this is a really unique organization, because I think there are opportunities that are out there for people that maybe don't want to do some of the other committee work. They don't want to be on a surgical skills committee necessarily. They don't want to be part of a limb salvage committee or a hospital surgical efficiency team. But they want to get involved, and they don't know what to do. And there's so much work to be done. And so, I think this is a really awesome opportunity to hear from you guys, some of the initiatives. And I mean, that was great, Scott. Like, who doesn't want to be involved in something as important as compensation and parity and important topics that I'm sure if you asked any, you know, foot and ankle surgeon, of course, they're going to want to be a part of that. And so, I, I think this is a really, you know, wonderful opportunity to, to kind of come together. And I think our profession as a whole has had some fragmentation over the last couple of years. And I think any opportunity for us to come together on issues and build for the better long-term goals, I think is wonderful. So, we really appreciate your time and, you know, willingness to talk about. And I really appreciate it too, Scott, the transparency. Like, you know, the first year I was there is like, I don't know what I'm doing here. This really isn't kind of what I, what I thought it was going to be. Because I think also, I know that quote that you're talking about. It's like, you know, those that don't want to be involved in politics will have politics done to them. And someone had said that to me one time when I was complaining, and it was like, oh, that's really powerful. And it really is true. Like, you don't have to be involved, but then don't complain, right? And so, I think especially as we are evolving as a profession, knowing where to get involved to have the most impact on the things that you care about is really important. So, in terms of some of the committees and things, this is useful to hear, you know, little, little opportunities that someone may be like, oh, I would love to be involved with coding and billing. And I actually have a lot of expertise I could bring to that. And that's an area I would like to get involved, or membership, or politically, right? Like, going and having these kinds of discussions. And so, could you talk a little more about how, the only analogy I can think of is like our political system. Like, if you guys, forgive me for my lack of knowledge here, but like creating a bill, for example, of, or proposal, you know, to take to the House of Delegates. for example, of a proposal, you know, to take to the House of Delegates. If you're wanting to make change, let's say you're in a state, you want to do something and there's, there's a limitation. Can you talk a little bit about how people, when they do get involved, what that process kind of looks like for them?
You want to go or you want me to go? So as far as the states, the way that they bring something to the House is that we have policy propositions that they can propose. They, it basically, we used to, in the old days, we called them resolutions. You know, whereas XYZ resolved, and then that's what they want to do is the resolved part. And those have to be submitted by a certain deadline, usually late fall. And then they go through a subcommittee to make sure they're in proper order and that nothing is too wildly crazy and that they actually have the dollar amount is, is pretty accurate that would be associated with that. And then those come to the House of Delegates and that's where the, the House debates them and either votes them up or down or amends them and then votes on them and things like that. So that is, the House is where policy pretty much gets set for everything. Yeah, that's great.
My apologies. My outlet wasn't charging my computer, so I'm, I'm back in the game now.
I thought you needed a bio break.
No, no. So if I remind me stepping back in, Scott, what's your favorite committee that you work on?
Well, I would have to say parity because that was really what motivated me to, to want to run. It was what I was really trying to champion when I was in, in Michigan. I was very inspired and impressed with the work that California had done with their Physician and Surgeons Task Force and tried to emulate or recreate that in Michigan with moderate success. They basically were like, yeah, this sounds great. Let's, let's see what happens in California first. And so that, I would say that that's near and dear to me. I, I think that the, the work is, some things like, I'm not really detail oriented, I'm more of a like big vision kind of thing. So like finance and like having to look at the numbers and make sure it all adds up and things like that. That tends to be more of a challenge for me where the things more like Brooke's talking about with membership of like, okay, you know, this is like crisis stage, very similar. I mean, we're actually, our organizations are going through a very similar process as far as the student recruitment. You know, you're a membership organization in a sense and that you want them to, to join. And, and so, you know, trying to really look at that and from all the different angles to, to try to determine, you know, how do we get this going in the right direction? And, you know, sometimes I think that it's almost not like you're going to turn it around. Not with student recruitment, but like for us with membership. It's, it's like, one of the things that I believe is that we are a boomer association in the sense that our basic sensibilities about the role that we provide were, are based from, you know, like maybe the eighties or even further back. And that we cannot continue to operate the way that we always have for these decades and think that somehow if we just do it leaner and meaner, that we're going to get the results we want. And we really have to begin to understand how young people think and, and how we provide the value to them. And I obviously, you know, things like what Brooke is doing with RUC and et cetera, to me are sort of non-negotiables as far as what you have to do. But we can't be everything to everybody. I mean, we all know that like the millennials and the Gen Zs, they look at the world differently than we do. Old guys like me, it's like, I'm a podiatrist, I joined. Well, that's not the way that it works. And it's not about podiatry associations, it's about church, it's about civic clubs. I mean, it's just the way the world is. And then on top of that, now we have super groups that have hundreds of podiatrists as employees, you know, trying to tell them why, you know, they need to spend that amount of money for that. And then, and then those that aren't in the groups, they're employed by hospitals, et cetera. And so for people like us, I needed the association to help not navigate the bureaucracy of private practice. And they don't need that anymore. That's the whole reason why they want to be an employee is because, you know, let somebody else worry about it. And so when we look at that landscape, it's like, where do we provide the value there? And, you know, that's why I shared that story, for example, about the E and M coding and, and where would podiatry be without that? And so there's no doubt that there is a need and a role for APMA. But what that's going to look like going into the future, we, we need to re-envision that.
Wow, I like what I'm hearing there, Scott. You know, as an APMA member and, you know, we have students that are all involved with APMA. I'll go out on a limb here and say, I think that is an issue. I think you can't be everything to everybody. I think people will look, turn around and say, you know, we love APMA's advocacy efforts. We love their political stances. We love the coding and all the things that are helping me while I'm in practice. But does APMA need to have a summer meeting or does AP, you know what I mean? Or does APMA need to have a ASPS surgical arm of the profession, which really isn't a surgical arm of the profession? I think people wonder that.
Yeah, and those are questions we ask.
The boards are wondering that too.
Yes, yes. And no, I, I can assure you that those are hard questions that we are asking amongst ourselves and debating and, and looking into, so.
Which, which makes sense. I mean, that's the fiduciary responsibility of a board, right? So I'm glad you guys are heading in that direction. Scott, when are you going to be president?
Well, providing that I don't, there's a saying about that. But if everything goes according to plan, I, I, 20, I was going to say 2017, but no, that's the wrong. 2027, I believe is the year that I will become president.
So there's a couple of years between you two then?
Yeah, Pat DeHir is between us.
Patrick's between, wow. So let me ask you this question. This is an obvious question. Do people that are in line for becoming the president, do you all work together like in a succession plan? I mean, is?
That's a great idea, Jeff. Yeah, no, we actually, you know, honestly, one of the best things about for me being on the board is the relationships that have been formed. And, and, and like I said, you know, some of the best people that I've ever worked with and some great friends. And, and I can say that, that when we talk about Brooke and Patrick, that they will be my friends for life and that we luckily are very much of the same mind. I mean, we, it doesn't mean that we always agree a hundred percent, but we're, we have a very, very similar general, did we lose Jeff again? Yeah, so anyway, we have a very similar outlook and a very collaborative approach. You know, my, my, I don't know what the right word is. Philosophy of leadership is that you need to care deeply and collaborate well with others and create a, a vision for the future. And that, those three things we all have in common. And so it's a joy to work with them.
And I like what you said there too. Like we don't always agree, but that's actually a good thing, right?
Absolutely.
Better ideas come out when we
Absolutely.
Have to find these places where it's like, ah, that's not going to work because, right? The, if you can't be helpful or be kind, be specific, like, okay, so this doesn't work. What can we do to make it work, right? And I think if, if, again, future thinking, the more we can focus on finding that common ground and finding those ways to connect, again, I think things will only get better. As you said, there's been a lot of change and there, again, whether, whether it's worse or better or wherever we are in the spectrum of things, you know, there are ways that we can, rather than just try to stick our heels in the sand and be resistant to, to move. I love that, that open mindedness of, you know, the world has changed and we need to change with it. And we're seeing this, the same thing with students, right? I mean, COVID completely revolutionized so many different things in all aspects of the world. But when we think about education, there was, you know, the idea of delivering lectures virtually to students was not really something that we did. It just wasn't really, there was no reason to change. And yet there are so many positive things that came out of options for virtual access to stuff. And then we also learned so much about how important that human connection and the things that you cannot do through a screen as effectively. So again, finding opportunities to kind of critically evaluate what the negatives are and then what the positives are. And then how do we figure out a way to kind of come together and build stronger? And I, I love that you guys have such an optimistic and positive outlook on, hey, you know, there, there's so much to do. Let's, you know, many hands make light work. Let's find the people that want to do it and let's, let's get it done.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm back, you know, I've done 70, I've done 70 episodes and thank goodness Joe is my co-host today, right?
Doing a great job.
I figure I'll come back and listen. Where are you all at right now?
We were talking about how sometimes it's good when, you know, board members or delegates might disagree and how that can actually build collaborative efforts and opportunities for really good change. So that's what we were talking about.
Oh, yeah. You know, friction amongst a leadership group leads to bigger and better things, I think. So, so Scott, I missed your last point and I'm sure that we'll pick it up. But you had mentioned, you know, you, the three of you working together as you go is approach your, each individual presidency. So I apologize if I'm late to the game.
That's okay. Yeah, we beat that horse to death while you were.
Okay, then we, then we
We all work together very well.
We're a good team.
Yeah, I may be going headstrong into something and they'll be like, whoa, slow down there a little bit. You know, and they kind of tug on my reins a little bit and then vice versa. And you know, it's really funny is outside of APMA and just general politics, world politics, Pat DeHir and I could not be more opposite ends of the spectrum. But you would never know that when we're sitting in a boardroom together because we really try to, we put all of that stuff aside and we, we really, really work very well together. And I can say that not just to Pat and I, I'm, really, I think most of our board, that's the case. You wouldn't necessarily be able to guess who, who is what end of the general political spectrum with, when we're all working together. So we do try to really put our personal things aside and, and really work together for the betterment of the profession.
That's outstanding. Can I shift gears on everybody here just a little bit?
Of course.
I was, I was hoping we could talk about, you know, all work and no play is not the answer. And we all are busy, we're in practice, you're giving countless hours to APMA. We're all giving countless hours back to the profession. What do you do when you're not working? Brooke?
Well, I have a college sophomore and a high school junior. And I don't see the college sophomore quite as much, but the high school junior is very involved in baseball, travel ball and high school ball. And both of them were in sports from the time they were about four years old, one soccer, one baseball. So honestly, my life outside of APMA has been, you know, coaching sports, being the team mom. Now just the minivan driver, well, I don't have a minivan anymore, but the, the taxi cab. So yeah, just constantly at, at sporting events. But in, outside of my own kids' sports, I'm an avid, avid Razorback fan. I had our not so great football season this year. So we'll do that. And then I live, where I live is just beautiful hiking and biking and lake, whoever, I live on a lake. So I love, summer is my absolute favorite season and I spend lots of time when I, anytime I can at the lake and, and hiking and things like that.
That's fantastic. Scott, what do you do when you're not consumed with APMA and patients?
A nap. No, I, I, you know, I do a lot. I'm, I'm a busy guy and I have a lot of things that I like. I, I'm a big sports fan, especially mostly football, but also basketball. And so, and I have season tickets to the Lions and the Pistons. I don't want to talk about the Pistons, but I'm excited about the Lions. And, and I like to travel. Looking forward, I'm going back to India in a couple of months, which is quite the adventure. And I have kids across the country and a couple of days I'm going to Montana. I have a son that is a rock climber and lives out there. And yeah, I think that there should be more than that, but I don't know. You know what my favorite thing to do is? Look at my phone. I've realized I'm addicted to my phone. I mean, I thought everybody else was addicted, but you know what? I am.
There's got to be a 12-step program to help you.
Yeah, well, I think it's just turn it off is all you have to do.
One step, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Hey, Joe, what do you do?
Only apps.
Joe, I know you've got a couple of young kids. What do you do when you're not at work or, you know, working with AO trauma or orthopedics and?
Um, so I, I can appreciate Brooke's perspective. You know, sometimes your hobbies become your children and your children's hobbies. So I have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old and they're spectacular. So anything that I can do with them that's baking related, we love to bake, creative stuff, so arts. I, I was an art major prior to going into medicine. So I love anything I can get them to do with their hands and being hands-on. They're very creative as little children are and they're spectacular in the things that they want to just construct. And so my answer is always yes, if there's an art project that we want to do. And then music, love music. I've always been a big music fan, both in, as a spectator and have not played in a really long time. But that's, that's my, my future thing I want to do is I want to learn a new instrument. That'll be a future goal. But the, the current focus is reading, like books, not, not journals, not digital texts, but like an actual book. I have been doing a lot more screen work recently and to Scott's point, trying to get off the phone. So book reading has been fun. But I usually fall asleep.
I love the instrument part that you said when I was, I always wanted to take piano lessons when I was a little girl and I never got the chance to. I did play the clarinet in high school or in junior high in high school. But when I turned 40, for my 40th birthday, my husband gave me a gift certificate for piano lessons.
That's actually exactly the instrument I want to work.
It was awesome. It was so fun. I took for, I took for about two years, but then the weekly lessons were getting to be a bit much with my, as my travel schedule picked up. My favorite part of that was every six months, I did a recital with the little five and six-year-olds.
That's fantastic.
That is great.
There you go. Well, Scott, I parallel you. I'm a Packer fan and a Milwaukee Bucks fan. So we've talked a lot about that over the years at the various meetings. So we got a lot of commiserating we can do together.
Jeff, what do you do? What do you do to unwind?
So I used to coach baseball and soccer. And then once my skills were no longer sufficient to train my kids as they got older, I got into shooting sporting clays. So I shoot targets for fun and travel around the country and try to compete.
And you're nationally ranked, right?
At one point I was, but it's kind of like golf, you know? The harder you try, the worse you do, you know?
You need to come here and check out days.
You know, I would like that, that's absolutely, I've been to Stewcart. Yeah, I've been, we've been down duck hunting down in Arkansas, so I've enjoyed that a lot. All right, well, so we're running a little short of time. I thought I'd give each of you the last word. Brooke, what would you tell a prospective student that's contemplating a career in podiatric medicine?
Wow. How much time do we have?
It's got to be an elevator pitch, you know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's an absolute great profession. You can do anything you want to do. Like I don't personally care to do big, huge trauma surgery and that's okay. So you can make it what you want to make it. And I, I just, it provides a great lifestyle. And that was what drew me to it because I was going to do general surgery. And then when I worked for some, I quickly decided that was not for me. So it, it just provides a lifestyle that you absolutely can grow with, you can change over the years. I'm starting to step back from surgery a little bit now in my last, hopefully 10 or 15 years of practice. So it just, it provides a great lifestyle and lets you do what you want to do.
Thank you. And Scott, what would you tell a prospective student that's contemplating a career in podiatric medicine?
Do it.
Do it. Just do it.
Yes, just do it. The, you know, I had a little bit different path. So I was married with three children and, and was very, I worked for the state of Ohio as what was called a youth leader with, so I worked in a as what was called a youth leader with, so I worked in a maximum security institution for juvenile felony offenders from Cleveland, Ohio. And I was very disillusioned with that whole scene without going into details. And so I knew that whatever I did, I wanted to make a good living because I had children that I couldn't take to, there's an amusement park that's called Cedar Point in northeast Ohio, which is, you know, wonderful, but things like that. So, you know, I needed to make more money, but I knew that I wanted to do it in a way that I was helping people and I wanted to be my own boss. And so I was lucky enough that I had a professor as a mentor who steered me to podiatry. And of course, the rest is history. And I feel so lucky to be a podiatrist. And I have many friends. One of my best friends is an orthopedic surgeon, et cetera. And they're like, you have the best job. And, and, you know, right now dermatology is a very, very popular specialty. And it's like, all they do is skin. We do dermatology and we do orthopedic surgery and we take care of children. And, you know, I mean, we, we can do it all. And to Brooke's point, you have the control of deciding where you want to go. And one of the things that I love as a general podiatrist is that I do that all. And if there is, you know, major trauma reconstructive surgery, I'm, you know, I'm 65 years old. I don't want to do that anymore. I'm happy to send it to Joe. And, and I love what I do. And one of the things that you will hear and is true is one of the most beautiful things is, is that we are helping people, you're not just giving them a prescription or, or whatever it is. So many times people walk into our offices in pain and they leave not limping. And they're so grateful. And there's nothing in life that really can be as valuable to you as feeling like you have a purpose and you're making a contribution. And, and if you want to be a doctor, podiatry will give you an opportunity to do that as much or more than any other specialty there is.
Very well said. You know, we have this Fida in the Street program for student recruitment. I need your help.
You don't need my help. You're doing great.
No, I mean, that was, that was well said, Scott. I echo your sentiments about the profession and the ability to help people and make a difference. And I think that the students we're bringing into the colleges have that as first and foremost, first and foremost on their priorities is to help people. And then the rest of it is, is like you said, there's work-life balance. There's opportunities to do whatever you want, whether it's wound care or sports medicine, surgery, general practice. You name it, right? Joe, last comments for you.
I think Scott really wrapped that up. It's like a mic drop. Yeah, I mirror both Brooke and Scott's comments for students. There is something for everyone in this profession. And I'm a big advocate for everyone has a voice, but if you don't use it, no one will hear it. So find the thing that you love and embrace it and run after it as hard as you can.
Like that. Well, we're running, we're running out of time. I wanted to thank both of you, Brooke and Scott, for your contributions to our profession on behalf of the profession. And just, just so you know, we send each of you a team's chat cup. You guys are on way too many committee meetings. You're getting up too early. You're staying up too late. You need something to drink coffee out of. And to our listeners out there, if you're watching on YouTube, please become a subscriber. If you're watching, if you're listening, I should say, on Spotify or Apple Podcast or Google Podcast, please give us a five-star rating. We will continue to bring leaders in the profession. I'm so pleased that you were willing to join us and represent APMA. To everybody out there, cheers till next week. Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Bye-bye.